Okay. This is the meeting of the, the caller meeting to order that the meeting of the Hampton Board of Selectment Board of Health, March 1st, 2001 at 6:02 PM, I guess. The meeting is being conducted remotely using video conference technology as approved by the Governor's Emergency Order of March 2020. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Are we being heard out there? I guess what they stood up, so that's a good sign.
Ted, you want to give us a thumbs up?
Okay.
Yeah. All right, that was your thumb, right? Just checking.
All right.
That's the audio problem.
So on the minutes panel, we don't have the, you know, these are to be reviewed tonight or some other time?
Just in the packet because I know that Mary Ellen wants to know where we will.
Okay. All right, okay. Okay, so tonight we're reviewing January 4th, 2021. We're approving them tonight.
Yeah.
No, we're just reviewing all this.
Yeah, because we didn't get them ahead of time.
Okay. All right, so these we're reviewing in the next week or something like that. All right. Under old business fire department information. What's the fire department information? The grants?
You should have a copy of the grant.
Just information, okay.
I was also going to mention tonight in my report that Lieutenant Sterling has resigned.
And now is that one of the people you would do an exit interview with and say?
He has actually, I will do an exit interview with him. I spoke to the chief about doing the exit interview right before the weekend. And I noted in his resignation letter that he's asking for an exit interview, so.
All right. Anything else on that? Main Street drinking water, sign the proposal from tie-in bond?
We have the tie-in bond proposal, which was about double what you had before you, but John discussed their proposal with the tie-in bond. And they have reduced the cost and they're going to be evaluating two of the most likely options for extending water, bringing water down Main Street.
I think we voted last week that to request a transfer from a reserve fund from the advisory. I think if they take positive action, I think it would be appropriate for the chair to sign that proposal tonight following their actions.
I will still know that at the board meeting tonight.
Yeah.
And then do they have a date for completion of this project?
I think it was in there.
I didn't notice one, but.
Didn't he say two or three weeks? We were hoping if we got it right to him, we'd see if it ends in March.
Yeah, they, a couple of weeks.
And then we'd have a, we'd have a thought that we could prepare a warrant article for the, tell me.
We don't want to go too long.
The municipal vulnerability listing session will be later on.
Do you have the agreement with our dispatchers? Here's copies. It's been revised because I was informed by the union representative this morning that the dispatcher who was approaching 20 years is not approaching 20 years. There was some discussion about service, I guess, in Long Meadow. It's well over a year away. So I removed, from what you have in your packet, I took one of those points out.
All right, and this is what we're, and they've agreed to this?
Yes. I sent the union representative plus our local representative copies of that before the weekend. And the union representative in downtown sent me the response this morning saying it's fine, but we don't have to include that provision to keep one on until August 13th so that she could reach her twentieth.
So if you look for a motion to.
Motion to approve the amendment.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We need to sign several copies here, I guess.
In connection with that.
You're taking, I'll take third. Third line to the world.
You'll take the second.
A couple of copies we'll send. In connection with that, we do now have signed copies of the IMA.
Different colored pen on each copy, I'll throw them off.
Review the Board of Health and Board of Selectment budget? Well, I don't think they'll take us up tonight, right?
No. I shared a couple of questions for the board. I think there's, you know, opportunity to look at some things. Again, we carried over, looks like, some of the numbers from last year. I think, I know P and Bob are going to consult with tech people to make sure that the number we have is either too high, not high enough, or whatever, what's our plan. You did mention the possible server upgrade we needed.
We need two, we need two servers, incidentally. I think one of them we're going to be able to cover with CARESAC money, but the assessors need their special server changed out. There's a new system that the state's providing, and what they have will not accommodate the new system, and so they have to get another server.
Yeah. I'd like them to look into leasing that server. You know, that's something I think, if this, they've been on the board, this is at least the third server they've gotten, I think. At this point, they may want to lease. They're probably looking at a virtual setup. I'd be shocked if some of their stuff not going to the cloud pretty soon. It seems like everything is. That'd be my other concern, is that some of the costs we're spending on maintenance, cloud services, sometimes we're seeing them jump up at work without notice to us. And we really should look at that so they don't get surprised halfway through the year.
At the present time, the only cloud service that we in this office are using is the OneDrive. And that is complimentary when you have office, the new office.
No, we're also, we also have monthly charge with each of our .gov addresses, things like that. And Microsoft is talking about a charge, surcharge on that. That's, I think, that $1,800 bill we see every month for checking. Website, you may want to check. Seemed like there was certainly some talk. We did pay the registry fee last year, right?
The domain fee is $400. The website, I have an email in to ask if they're going to change.
Right. Is the $400 every year? Because, I mean, when we register.
That's the domain.
That's strange, because we register our domain and it's good for five years.
This is the government.
Well, the government, every year I hope they get a little more. That's great. Certainly looks like we're holding the line on spending. If you see that column, how much is left? Nice to see that a lot of them are well over 50%. Yeah, do you think the custodial, they'll still be holding the line? Okay. Utilities is looking good, but again, I think all that has to be a cautionary view because of course the low usage of people coming in at some time. You know, the library obviously was not utilized to its full extent, so. Even though it looks like we have more than 50% there, I think hopefully next year Restoration Services will bring that number up again. And I would bet that the utilities will be looking to Boston for an increase. That's just a guess. Never happened in a lifetime. It's about time for it now. Straight lighting, I think we have that list from the police and we're just about ready to send that over to the grid.
I actually contacted Tarman to see if he had updated one. I haven't heard back from him.
I saw the one they had before and I know, there's no new streets. I think the list is pretty good. But again, same thing, Cliff and I reviewing this in Carfa Bill just to make sure the savings are truly there. And they are, so. I think we had stormwater under our stuff, didn't we?
We do have stormwater. And I got an email from.
It's not on this page.
I got a, no, I got a mail from Gary Weiner, and he expects that to go down about $12,000 to $33,000, $45,000.
Some of the stuff we've hit.
Right, because we got past those things, okay? Gone down. I noticed we don't have any money in, for, in the transfer for hauling and telephone supplies, bowling and all that, so we got to put some figure in there.
A health nurse, we talked about that this morning.
Okay. You know, I see traffic control. What's the, this doesn't do with this, but what are the counters? I found there's counters on Allen Street and on Main Street, you know?
I mean, the.
The rubber things that you drive over.
They're probably doing a survey of the traffic. There's probably PVPC, they do that type of thing.
We don't have anything for school legal because we don't know where that's going, or how much will have left.
Is that on here?
Yeah, first page.
There is money left. I haven't been.
There is some money left, yeah.
It was about 30.
He'll eat through that, I'm sure.
Yes, 30.
This must be a different copy than the one you sent. I thought, I thought the copy you sent showed the 130 for administrative.
It did.
It's not on this copy.
Where are you missing?
I know I looked at the one.
Yeah, the copy that I sent, I added another number there.
Oh, okay.
Okay. We got to be working from the OneDrive, so we're all on the same page.
It's on the OneDrive.
Yeah.
Okay. Jane just printed this copy.
Oh, I see.
And we were all on the same page.
All right. So we've got another week to look at this.
Yeah, like I said, I just worry, you know, property and liability, you never know. I know you're getting quotes from Barry, et cetera. You know.
And part of the increase is due to natural disasters and not that we're suffering in our area, but.
No, you, it goes into the natural pool.
Yeah.
Anything, Mary Ellen?
Other than that, nothing really jumps out. I think it's pretty well managed.
Bobby, you want to give us a?
Well, I mean, we will have a question about emergency management.
We will have a, yeah. That could be going down a little bit.
Right.
You want to give us an update on the?
Well, emergency management is what, is what Chief Barnes wrote.
President's chief's contract.
So maybe that would be part of the police.
So that might be part of the way I change that.
Yes, exactly.
Well, not all of it is. The bulk of it is paying for the software. So, you know, it's like, oh gosh. The Rave system is, and we've looked at that and that's something maybe get their input on. We switched to Rave from, you recall what it was before that, when you signed up?
Yeah. I'm the one that does Rave now, and it is.
I thought the old system was easier myself.
I was going to say it's awkward, it's hard to use, but frankly, I've learned how to use it.
So we might as well skip.
Not so bad anymore.
I won't say gun to your head, that's wrong. But either way, that's something to look at, but the software is extremely expensive.
Yeah, man, this, this is free. The Rave is free.
No, it's not. Oh, it's not.
I told you it was free.
It's free this year, could be already paid for. Yes, right. No, it's not. If you, you see why that account is so low, because we paid $4,000, $5,000, $6,000 for it.
I was told, who bought this? Because it was so hard to use. I said, why don't we do E911 or the, the other rival?
What was the software before Rave? I think of that name. The 911, whatever. Blackboard Connect, yeah. So, no. And Chief moved us to Rave. A little more money, but more features. And you'll see, that's why with $8,000, some of it's Jeff's money and the rest is his software.
That's for the whole year.
Well, it is not easy to use.
Now you're considering, well, boy, for free I could suffer through it. And I love it so much.
If we're going to have to pay for it.
I would say that's good. She would like to say no.
The one that I'd like is Code Red. Has the town ever looked at that?
No, no. One caution, I don't know if we want to be switching software every other year, you know, people have no, because that was one thing we lost with the Blackboard Connect, is that they did not really export its listed numbers to Rave and people had to re-enter again. And I think that's a danger. People think, oh, I'm all set, I'm going to get the messages. No, we changed software. You should have known you were putting it in, so.
And I think we're going to have increasing difficulty reaching people with that technology because people are dropping their levels. You can answer your cell phone, but remember we put that on the website, but people simply haven't done that. They haven't gone to the website, entered their cell phone numbers.
Okay, well, this time.
I get called once in a while and I try to instruct people and then I, I say, call PD.
Well, next time we'll take a sheet of paper, we'll put it in with the tax bill, because everybody opens the tax bill. They'll see that piece of paper.
All right. Bobby, you want to give us a quick review of the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board Audit, where we are?
Well. Today, the administrators and managers in the area and some others who joined the meeting discussed an approach in common to the meeting that's coming on Wednesday. As you know, I was asked by the chair to set up a special meeting with the Hampton County Regional Retirement Board. I sent them a message, they responded back that they will have a meeting with us on Wednesday at 10:00 AM. And so it is not going to be a video conference, it's going to be one of the telephone conferences. But I might think, my guess is that we're probably going to have 15 to 20 people from the area participate. Today, we had participation from the far western end of Hampton County, the administrator in Chesterfield, or Chester, and from the far eastern end, we had the administrator from Wales. And so, and good representation, and certainly the larger towns east of Springfield were part of it. And I think what we've agreed to do is that questions are going to be funneled to me today and tomorrow. I've already gotten some. I'm going to put them all together and we're going to ask question by question. And then at the end of that, we're going to have each individual who wants to address the board, address the board and make any comments that they want, or any suggestions that they want, to avoid, you know, just a free-for-all chaos type situation. That's where it stands. Clearly, there are lots of things going on at once. As you know, when PARAC completed the audit, they turned over some materials to what they call the appropriate authorities. We know that was the Attorney General, the Ethics Commission, and the Inspector General. So I think we can anticipate that something may happen at the other end of the state, apart from anything that happens locally. What I, the sense that I have from talking with local administrators is that I haven't heard any that have confidence that this particular board can serve the interests of the towns and the town employees. There's too many irregularities. My guess is that you're going to see quite a few stepping in and saying that they believe that the organization should change and the board should resign.
Do you think there's a possibility of any money coming back, or we're looking at reductions in our, I guess, out-of-control assessments going forward?
I'm not sure that, well, one of the key questions has to do with those invoices, amounting to well over $200,000, for which there doesn't seem to be any backup material. And that money might somehow be repaid, or at least we should have a decision to go after it, paying for alleged services that didn't exist. I think you may have seen that the, the chair of the board paid back well over $1,800 that he had taken in reimbursement for travel expenses and for, actually for hotel lodging, when in fact he had stayed at his own condo. And so I believe that money that was contributed to Social Security will be returned because that's not permitted.
Does the government send money back? Does Social Security have any money?
So, there are a lot of moving parts here.
So you're meeting with them to get information and to make suggestions and improvements in their procedures?
We are meeting to go through the issues one by one and see what their response is.
Okay.
And basically to say, this must change.
And then how do we affect that change, I guess, is where I'm at.
Well, the truth is that we do not have power to act. They have power to act in Boston. I think that if enough employees of the towns in Hampton County, as well as selectmen and others who have to raise taxes to pay retirement benefits and a retirement assessment, if enough of those make it clear that it's unacceptable, I think public opinion can bring change or force change.
And the change has to come from who, from what body?
The Board of the Hampton County Retirement, Regional Retirement Board.
To affect that change, does it have to come from the legislature? Does it have to come, is there a statewide board?
The change would have to be that the board members would resign and a new, a new board take office. And again, we don't have the power to force that, but eventually, if there's enough concern shown throughout the county, I have a sense that things can change.
So it might do us well to have, to have, for you to share the word with everybody, to have all their members write letters, contact, you know, that kind of thing, so that at least there's a groundswell of, you know, everybody on the same page, let's get this thing straightened out.
I think the press is also important here, too, in getting the message out. You know, it's fairly complicated. It's not something, the way it operates is not easily understood. And, and so I think there's been less interest over the years in doing stories about their operation.
Well, the increases have never been disabsorbing. I think what we've exposed is that the past couple of years, they've really been out of control.
Right, exactly, exactly.
Well, I just like to add my view, and my view is this, in the very least, the chairman slash treasurer has to step down from office. You can't have someone in office who's going to be currently under three investigations. I mean, he'll be the principal of three investigations, as well as some of the board members. So I think the towns really have to push for his resignation, or at least step aside. You know, I think it's also important to note that you really have what I call the Agawam crony cabal. You have the, you have the Mr. Thoreau, who is the, lives with, Agawam former town clerk. You have Mr. Carl Schmazel, I think I'm pronouncing as Reymond, excuse me for that, but with an Agawam retired firefighter. And then you have the Agawam Town Treasurer, Laurel Plazek, who is also the chairman of the Advisory Council, who, which appointed her chairman, a member of the board. So you have three of the five members are from Agawam, the offices are in Agawam, and their consul is also the town council for Agawam. So you have this cabal. So one thing you could do legislatively is, is ask our state representative, state senator to file a bill which require that in the future, someone has to go from each different town. If the five members would have to come from five different towns. And that's the way the county commission used to work. There was three county commissioners, each one had to come from a different town. So that's one legislative thing. But in any event, I think it really calls for a really extensive group of people to keep at this all the time. And I want to end it here because we need to go to the advisory committee meeting, but that's where we stand.
You want to tell the people who are, who did our meeting that will return?
Maybe.
Yeah. What else we have on the agenda, can we go?
We've got the MVP listening session.
Okay. So we're going to recess to the advisory committee meeting, and I don't know how to do this, do you, do you just, when we come back, go back in, or just leave it on?
Just leave it.
Just leave it on, right?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we're, we're going upstairs to the advisory committee meeting. No fooling in the halls when you go upstairs.
No.
Nobody's coming in.
It's a little sound on there.